Good evening and welcome to the Broom County Council of Churches Wellness Seminar. We are glad that you're here to join us this evening, and we hope that the information that's shared will help you as we talk about information related to COVID and the challenges that we face still with the COVID pandemic. I want to share with you, this Wednesday, tonight is Tuesday, Tuesday, we have as our featured presenter Ms. Annie Depew, and she is a coordinator and vaccinator of the high-risk clinic at UHS. But before Annie shares with us her presentation, just want to say thank you to the Inwell United Methodist Church for hosting us here in Inwell. Also, as the conversation goes on, if you are logged online, please, if you have questions, you can jot your questions in the chat area, and our moderator will let us know, and we will address your questions from our panelists. And we have some very fine panelists with us this evening, and when we get to the panelists section, they will introduce themselves. And so, again, tonight, this wellness seminar is brought to you by the Broom County Council of Churches. Now, we will have Ms. Annie Depew. Again, she is the coordinator and the vaccinator at the high-risk clinic there in Binghamton at UHS. She's been there for the last 13 years, and this clinic is a result, I believe, of the COVID vaccine helping people to be vaccinated and get their vaccines who are high-risk. And so, without further ado, I'm going to let Ms. Annie Depew share her presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I apologize in advance if I sound a little hoarse. I hear a little bit of an echo, but I assume that will go away momentarily. I'm just getting over a cold, not COVID, but a little bit of a cold, so my apologies if I sound a little strained. But thank you so much for having me tonight. It's a real honor to share with you some of my experience with the high-risk COVID vaccine clinic. And so, I have a short deck to sort of walk you all through my experiences. But my role at UHS is during non-pandemic times, I'm the System Director of Population Health Management. So, we do quite a bit of work with the community in terms of outreach and care coordination, care management, those kinds of things. And I've been very fortunate over the past several months, nearly a year now, to work in a sort of interim capacity with the occupational medicine team at UHS. So, that includes both the Employee Health Office and all things workforce, as you'll hear about in a moment, as well as the occupational community around us and making sure that we have a healthy workforce all around us. So, with no further ado, so the vaccine rollout, we've been in this pandemic for just over two years now, but vaccines are newer. They've really only been part of the latter half of this pandemic. So, Broom County received our very first shipment of vaccines in December 2020. It was right before the Christmas holiday, actually. I believe the first vaccines were administered, you know, within a day or two of Christmas in 2020, and the community here locally had received both Pfizer and Moderna. So, those were distributed to the hospital systems here locally. It wasn't until later in the spring of '21, just about a year ago now, that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine became available in this community. So, the difference between those two vaccine types is pretty substantial. The Johnson &amp; Johnson is what they call a viral vector vaccine, and it's very similar in nature to sort of the flu vaccine that we've seen for many, many years. That differs from the Pfizer and the Moderna brands in that they're made with an mRNA technology, which is not new to science, but certainly new to vaccines and certainly new to the pandemic kind of, what we see with pandemic technology and how quickly those vaccines became available. But it was a true blessing, as we'll see in a second, for how many people have been vaccinated. So, it feels like a long time ago now, for those of us who have been doing this for the past 14, 15 months, but in the very beginning, when vaccines became available on the market, you may recall that they weren't readily available to the to the community at large. And so, that feels like a million years ago now, but it was really primarily the highest-risk populations were eligible to get the vaccine in the very beginning. So, what we mean by that is first-line responders, healthcare workers, residents of skilled nursing facilities and long-term care facilities, individuals who were likely to become in contact with the virus. So, that was the first sort of strata of individuals in our community who were eligible to even get a dose. But quickly, in the state of New York and across the country, there were different sort of broadenings of how that net was cast of who was eligible to get a vaccine. And so, by about this time last year, the population eligible for a vaccine was really the entirety of the adult population. So, it was about this time in the spring of last year. But now, over the course of the remaining part of the spring and summer of 2021, science, you know, more studies came about for other populations of interest, and current state is anybody who's five years of age or older is eligible and encouraged to get a vaccine. So, before I advance the slide, I want to talk a little bit about that, because what we hear about in the media all the time and in the medical community is, you know, vaccines are really wonderful, and they're great, and they're safe, and everybody should get one. If you're if you're five or older, go for it. But there are several individuals in our community who struggle with allergies and struggle with histories of anaphylaxis and sensitivities to different components and chemicals. And so, for many folks in our community, eligibility based on age wasn't quite enough. And so, there was a concern about riskiness of getting the vaccine. So, that is a big, that became a big thought process behind what I'm about to share with you and what UHS did to address that part of the population. And so, these individuals who are high-risk, here's a sort of a couple of different images and slides of what those individuals look like. I mentioned history of allergies, history of anaphylaxis. There's two chemicals in particular, at the risk of getting too into the weeds here, there's two chemicals that are in the mRNA vaccine. So, one is called PEG or polyethylene glycol. That's in the primarily the Moderna vaccine, and there's a polystorbate-80 component, which is very similar, but that's in the Pfizer vaccine. So, anybody with a known history of either of those two components, we would be concerned about potentially receiving a vaccine and having them have an allergic type reaction. We found that anybody with a severe asthmatic history or folks who maybe had needed to use an inhaler in the past were having a higher, maybe higher likelihood of having a little bit of a challenge with the first dose after they would receive a vaccine. And so, the other thing that came about was just a lot of nervousness about vaccines. So, lots of food allergies. And so, what we found was clinics who were offering the vaccine were finding a lot of people presenting saying, hey, I would really like a vaccine, but I'm very nervous about it. And so, we had vaccinators across the community use their clinical judgment and say, you know what, I'm not really comfortable without getting a little bit more information from you, or maybe elevating your case and your desire to get a vaccine to a more appropriate location. And so, based on all of these potential contraindications to giving a vaccine, UHS came together with both folks within our own workforce and within the community who really wanted to get this vaccine, and we put together a high-risk COVID vaccine clinic. And so, here's another slide that talks about some of the different reasons that people might want to get a vaccine. They had a first-dose reaction, they're mandated to get a vaccine, they might have, you know, reasons outside of sort of personal motivations to get a vaccine, they want to contribute to herd immunity, you know, be a good citizen, variety of other reasons. Everybody's motivated to get a vaccine differently. But regardless, like I said, not everybody is necessarily sort of a normal risk type of individual to this kind of a vaccine. So, UHS established this high-risk clinic in February '21. I'm going to kind of linger on the slide a little bit and just talk to you about it. So, what we did is we found a location that's really proximal to an emergency department. In fact, right across the hallway from the Binghamton General Emergency Department, and we set up a normal clinic, but that was just a different kind of location. So, what we did was make sure that we had extended availability of seats for extended observations, so that what we could do is bring the high-risk individuals in, vaccinate them like we would at any other clinic, at any retail pharmacy, or any medical site providing any of these kinds of vaccines, but we were offering an extended observation. And so, instead of having, you know, this mass vaccination kind of setup, it was more of a one-on-one kind of experience. And then, like I said, across the hallway from the emergency department. So, in the event that anybody had an adverse reaction, they started having difficulty breathing, started getting really itchy, we certainly could intervene right away. So, we would have rescue medications on hand, and then in sort of the worst-case type of scenario, we would call what's called a medical first response, but basically just call the emergency department folks to have them come across the hallway and come help us out to make sure that, you know, necessary treatment could be provided should anybody go into anaphylaxis following the vaccine. You'll see a little bit of data and a couple of slides here about how rare that really was. But certainly, we wanted to take every precaution possible. So, while the vaccine itself was not different in this high-risk COVID clinic, what we did was provide a really safe venue where people could feel more comfortable, that they were getting a little bit more personalized attention, that they were being reviewed by the high-risk clinic. It wasn't just sort of a walk-in. People had to kind of not apply, but get referred to the clinic, and they would get referred from a variety of sources. But then, myself being one of the vaccinators or the other vaccinator team members would review the case, kind of get familiar with the person before we would give them, you know, provide them the vaccine. We worked very closely with an allergist in our community, which became quickly a New York State requirement for this high-risk clinic, so that we were making sure that we were super safe for all the patients who were receiving the vaccine, even though they were high-risk. And then, we just gave a really, you know, we tried to schedule that second dose, assuming the first dose went well, or booster doses when those became available. And so, it became a much more, I think, comfortable environment for our high-risk personnel who were willing to come. And we still keep in touch with individuals who are now becoming eligible for booster doses, that we've been doing this ever since February of last year. So, I can't believe it's been 13 months. But you'll see a little bit of data on this slide. It's a pretty data-heavy slide, actually. But the, I guess, the takeaway here is we've talked to over 200, almost 275 individuals who have been referred to us. So, you can see over the course of time, and the scaling is a little bit different here. So, you can see that a lot of this is sort of the first two quarters of 2021. And then, after we hit the midpoint of summer, our referral volume kind of dropped off a little bit, but still, we remain available to referrals. And then, you can see sort of the frequency of how, on any given date, and again, note the scaling, most of our work was in the first two quarters of '21. But you can see how many people we were vaccinating on any given day. So, you may know that while we've had 274 people referred to us, we've only vaccinated 218. So, there's a delta there, right? So, the individuals who haven't received a vaccine from us could be for a variety of reasons. Either they ended up saying, you know, it's just not for me, it's not something I'm comfortable with just yet, for a variety of reasons. We may have lost contact with them, or they may have come and then decided to sort of postpone. So, we've got a few folks on our waitlist who are still waiting for some more input from their care team, and that's totally fine. We remain open and available for those folks. You can see where our volumes came in, sort of this pie chart here, where folks were getting referred from the Gannett Building, the 48% there of what you're seeing. That was the mass vaccination clinic over in Johnson City. So, that's really sort of, that was our first foray into the community. We really sort of started this high-risk clinic for our workforce, knowing that our own healthcare people at UHS, you know, were eligible to get the vaccine in the early part of 2021. But then, quickly, as folks were eligible to get appointments scheduled at the Gannett Building, they were being sort of, you know, assessed and then determined, maybe it's safer for them to get the vaccine at a different location. So, we were receiving, you know, hundreds of referrals from the Gannett location, which was wonderful. We were happy to get the community involvement. And so, the real question here, I think this is always to present, is, you know, these are high-risk individuals. So, I'm a nurse myself, I'm a nurse by training, and so, vaccinating anybody who I know to be high-risk, having a little bit of a critical care background, that rescue med kit is very, very important. So, we kind of have to go into it with the assumption that everybody who comes is likely to have to have interventions, right? So, they may need to have treatment beforehand, Benadryl, those kinds of things, or anything up to and including epinephrine, following the vaccine to make sure that we hold off and prevent any, you know, true anaphylaxis from occurring, that we maintain an airway and preserve life at all costs. But there's this system in the United States called the VAERS system, and it's through the government, but it's a vaccine adverse event reporting system. We call it VAERS for short. But what that is, is anytime that there's an adverse reaction, anybody, doesn't have to be a healthcare person, can submit, can submit their sort of reaction, if you will, to the vaccine on this document. And it's all done electronically. And what happens is the manufacturers, the government, they get this data, and it really helps them to sort of enhance and improve vaccines moving forward, and allows them to study for any reactions, so they can better understand maybe what happened and how can they adjust those vaccines moving forward. So, again, moving into these vaccine, these high-risk vaccine clinics, we assume that we're going to have to do quite a few of these VAERS reports, because we're going to have a lot of reactions. But in reality, you'll see just this tiny little darker green sliver of the pie graph. Here only 3% or seven individuals overall ever ended up needing to be either transferred to the emergency department because of a reaction, or needed one of those VAERS submitted. So, that's a really, I'm really proud of that percentage. I think the bulk of folks, this 85%, the bulk of this pie here, were really folks who we did our, I mean, we did our extreme due diligence on everybody, of course. But, you know, folks who were high-risk said, you know, I don't want to take a chance going to a facility where I may have a reaction, and I'm not in a place where I am proximal to emergency treatment. I don't want to be in a place where I need to take an ambulance to get emergency treatment. I'd rather come to the high-risk clinic. And we were certainly happy to accommodate, you know, all 218 individuals. But 85% of them came and got their vaccine and had no issues whatsoever, and were able to return to the community. And they came for one, two, or possibly all three, including their booster doses. And that was, we've been more than happy to take care for everybody who's come across, come across our way, whether it was a self-referral, a referral from a clinic or a provider, and we're still accepting those referrals. So, we're hoping to maintain this 3%, of course, this really good outcome. But we're really proud to be able to do that. And so, this is kind of, you know, where we're moving forward here. So, we've got this high-risk clinic. It continues to be a hot topic, these high-risk individuals, these vaccinations that are available. Of course, we're kind of coming out sort of of flu season here, now that we're in the middle of March. But there's all types of vaccinations for all sorts of age groups. And so, thinking about people who have known allergic type histories, anaphylactic type histories, food allergies, you know, this is something that we have to think about, you know, the comfort level with vaccines moving forward. What do we want to do? And so, thinking about as other manufacturers come onto the market, as other vaccines for COVID and other types of illnesses become available, you know, are there individuals who would want to use the high-risk clinic? There's also this new fun and exciting science regarding desensitization. So, individuals who are truly high-risk, who could benefit from getting the vaccine for any number of reasons, but are certainly, you know, maybe even too high-risk to get all of the vaccine at one time, there's some new science out there that's being sort of trialed, not locally just yet, but where you're giving just tiny little bits of the vaccine in short intervals over the course of maybe several hours, rather than all at once, just to get somebody acclimated to the vaccine. So, if they are going to have an adverse reaction, they have it very, very slowly and very incrementally, rather than, you know, giving them too much of a dose that they may or may not recover from with immediate intervention. So, there's more that we're learning about that, and hopefully that that may or may not become an option in our immediate local area, but certainly as science develops, and there's a comfort that's obtained with all of that, trying to accommodate the community however we can. And so, now, we remain open and available. People are still getting referred to us, and we're happy to accommodate. We have not done any vaccines outside of just COVID-19 yet, with the Pfizer, Moderna, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson. But that may change in the future, and certainly, you know, my involvement with that clinic is to be open and, you know, available for anybody who has a request. We are always trying to accommodate what the community need is. And so, that's pretty much a summary of kind of what we've been doing. I'm curious if there's questions. I'll stop screen sharing here for a second, but happy to talk a little bit about what our work has been, or anything, anything that anybody might have some comments on.
So, right now, there are no questions, Anne, but I'm sure there are going to be some questions. We want to move to our panelists this evening, and I did forget this last week. We're here for an hour. We may run over a few minutes, but so that you'll know how much time that you have to watch and be with us. And so, we'll try to wrap up shortly around 8:00. And so, we have panelists from the community who do work in our community, and they have been working diligently and faithfully with the vaccinations, education, and information. And so, we have first, to my left, Chelsea Riomni-Nelvick. I just screwed that up. I just did. Help me out, Chelsea.
Chelsea Riom-Nelvick.
Riom-Nelvick, okay. And Chelsea is from the Broom County Health Department. She's a public educator. So, Chelsea, tell us what you do in the Health Department in general, and your work with COVID-19 and vaccinations.
Sure. So, I've worked at the Health Department for six years. I've worked in a lot of different programs in that time, everything from falls prevention to tobacco prevention, all across the map. But for the last four years, I've worked in immunizations and communicable disease control. So, doing surveillance on different communicable diseases, educating the community and healthcare providers about vaccines and best practices for giving and recommending them to their patients. So, when COVID hit two years ago, I was ready to go on this new communicable disease. At that time, I started, I was in charge of the Broom County COVID-19 dashboard. It's the dashboard. It's available on the Broom County website. It's updated daily with case counts, you know, from today, overtime, cases by age, gender, race, vaccination status, deaths. So, I've been working on that for the last two years of the pandemic. And once the COVID-19 vaccine became available, since I have background in vaccines, I also started working to promote the COVID-19 vaccine in our community. You know, we go out and speak to individuals. We educate healthcare providers on how to have difficult vaccine conversations with their patients. So, we're doing a lot of different things to, you know, continue to promote the vaccine, even though people are starting to feel like COVID is winding down.
Now, I think that's one of the biggest challenges, is that we're in this low where the pandemic does not seem as scary as it was in the beginning. And so, people, I think one of the biggest challenges is going back for those booster shots, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And those who haven't gotten shots, vaccines, vaccinated, and they're probably thinking, well, I don't need to right now. And so, I think we're in that area. Where it can be very challenging for us as a community and a population. So, thank you. Thank you for the work that you do. Melissa Brenna is a family nurse practitioner here in the community, and she has worked with the Health Department as well as in and through the community. Tell us what you do, Melissa.
Well, beginning in March of 2020, our medical director, Christopher Ryan, called me. We had worked together at the Health Department in the past, such as with the 2011 flood and so forth, and asked if I would be willing to help out with case investigation and contact tracing. So, I was still working full-time elsewhere at that point. So, I did case investigation, contact tracing on weekends and some evenings, most weekends, for quite a while. And then, we got into, as was already described, we got into vaccines. And our first big effort was at the SUNY Broom Ice Center, where we vaccinated thousands of people. The ice center closed, and we became more out in the community, particularly going to schools, food pantries, homeless shelters. Last summer, we went to most, I think, of the summer festivals, from the Broom County Fair to the Lumberjack Festival in Deposit, National Night Out, several of those things, Trucks on the Tracks, et cetera. And our vaccine efforts have slowed down, but we are still out there, going to schools and any other venue. We've also done employers, manufacturing, large warehouse people. So, we've had, we've been out there. But we're always looking for other venues. We go to community meals. We were here two weeks, or a week or so ago, at the Inwell United Methodist Community Meal Night, and vaccinated. And we Salvation Army at their breakfast give-out. A number of churches have food pantries, and we've been there. And we're open and willing to go just about anywhere. We've also, I've also been involved in testing. For a while, we had the school-based testing initiative, so that if a child got sent to the nurse's office at school because they had some symptoms, and then were sent home, for parents or guardians, it would have difficulty with that would have difficulty with transportation or work schedules or whatever, we would go to the home and test the child and any other household members who wanted to be tested. Of course, now the situation, and we also had the Broom County Testing Tent, which was a casualty to one of our bad winter storms, and so that's no longer in operation. But in the meantime, we were helping to supply the community with home testing. And that seems to be where most of the testing is occurring. You know, so we've put that agency, I like to call it, the ability to do for oneself right in people's hands. And everybody basically knows what to do. If they test positive, they know they need to stay home and, you know, call their healthcare professional. But it's certainly something that has evolved.
So you mentioned the testing, and Broom County has had supply give-out for test kits, and they were given out free of charge to residents in Broom County. Now, today, you know, if someone needed a test kit, how would they go about getting a test kit? And where would they go to get one from?
Just come to the Broom County Health Department. Right at the front desk, we have tests that we give out, no charge. Just ask for COVID tests and we will give them to you. Schools have been supplied with them. They're also much more readily available in pharmacies, some of which are not charging for the tests. So they are readily available, and they're really very simple to use. Every package has a procedure with pictures and exactly how to do it. And it's not a difficult process. It's, you know, go around each nostril five times, each nostril five times with a swab, put it in a solution, drop it on the thing, and within 10 minutes, you have a result. And if it's positive, you're positive. You are infected.
And if it's positive and people are positive, what should they do?
Number one, stay home. Stay home. And depending on vaccination status of household members, if they're fully vaccinated, they don't need to quarantine. They don't need to stay home. But they should monitor themselves very carefully for symptoms.
So if the individual is in a household with other people that are vaccinated, the vaccinated individuals do not have to be quarantined? Is that what you're saying?
If they're fully vaccinated.
With both dosage and booster?
Yeah.
They themselves do not have to be quarantined? What about the individual that is tested positive? How long should they stay home? And what's the process or procedure? And any one of you ladies can answer that.
Right now, isolation, when you test positive, what we call staying away from other people, should start, it lasts for five days. We originally, as we knew less, two years ago, it was 14 days. And then it got shaved down to 10 days. And now we're quite comfortable with the five-day mark. You are contagious, if you're infected, you're contagious two days before you develop symptoms or two days before you took the test if you don't have symptoms. And of course, a number of people are asymptomatic with this infection. They have no symptoms. But they are able to transmit the infection to other people.
Can I just jump in right there? For purposes of hospitalization, if you're positive, we need to have two negative tests.
So hold on, Margaret. When you say the purposes of hospitalization, can you break that down?
Say you were coming in, you have to do surgery. So you're scheduled for a surgical procedure. And, oh my goodness, I just found I'm positive. So of course, we're not going to treat you or you're not going to have, surgery's going to have to be postponed. So you're going to do your five-day quarantine or stay at home, but we need to have two negative tests before any anesthesiologist will actually see you. Because we cannot mask you while you're under anesthesia, right?
Well, an intubation for anesthesia is a very high risk.
Very high risk. So everyone in that operating room is exposed to you. So we have to make sure, because if one of us go down, we all go down. It's pretty much how it works.
Margaret, Eve is a nurse at UHS. She works at the Mental Health Department at UHS. Margaret, you know, this pandemic has challenged us as a community, has challenged us individually. And the population, I think, that is seldomly thought about are patients with mental health challenges. How has this impacted the patients? And then we'll talk about mental health in general.
Right. So first of all, what I primarily do, I am referred to as an intake nurse. That is my primary function right now. In other words, I pre-assess and I post-assess a patient who comes in for electroconvulsive therapy. I also work inpatient, on the inpatient unit, just to keep my head in the game. But that is my primary function. So when you come in for treatment, I need to make, I have to do an assessment and evaluation. I have to assess you both mentally and physically. So in other words, I am up close and personal with patients. I have to, you know, listen to lungs. I have to listen to hearts. So I am right in your face, and you are right in my face. So I am going to need to be well, and I need to be protected as well as you need to be protected. So anyways, before COVID, we were treating, I would say, anywhere from 15 to 20 patients three days a week. Once the pandemic hit, everything, pretty much, at one point, we were treating no more than five patients because we had to figure out how to social distance, how to distance patients so people are not infected or do not infect each other. And before that, you have to be tested before you actually come in to be treated. So if we have to test to make sure that you are negative before we can actually put you on the anesthesia or before any of our staff can actually see you. And, you know, pretty much that was how it worked. So at this point, we're back up to treating, I would say, maybe about 10, 12 patients a day. We still haven't gotten back up to full numbers because we still, in my waiting room, I do not allow more than five people in there at any one time. Okay? And before you enter that space, I have to, we send patients to the tent on the parkway for the most part, local people to get tested before their treatment day. And so I can go into the system and I can check your status to make sure, to see what, you know, what you're, whether you're negative or positive. Of course, if you're positive, I'm going to tell you, you can't come in for treatment. So beyond that, you know, you're good to go. And before you enter my space, I have to absolutely know that you're negative because no anesthesiologist is going to touch you or do any treatment on you if you're positive at all. Sometimes patients who are not from around here, they're from Ithaca or other outline areas, or they're not in the UHS system, it's a little difficult sometimes. And unless they can produce that test, and what I tell patients, have them download it on your phone. Because if I can look at it on your phone, I see where you went, I see a negative, I see the appropriate date, because they have to be tested within three to five days at this point, you know, for us to accept them for treatment. And if I can see that, then you are good to go. At the same time, in the back of your head, you're going like, okay, I hope everybody's okay. Because, you know, right? Sometimes you cannot, there is no absolute certainty sometimes, pretty much. So in conjunction, the CDC, in conjunction with the U.S. Census Bureau, did a study, started around, it's like an in-home survey, not an in-home survey, but a population study. And what they were looking at was, let's see, they were looking at how people were responding mentally to the pandemic, how it was affecting them. And Pesto, what is a question that you need to ask me about that?
How the pandemic is impacting individuals with mental health challenges?
Right. So what we would see, and I don't have the numbers for you right now, but what we saw, that more people were coming in, they were sicker, they were more anxious, more depressed, people who had stopped, say, using illegal substances, they had started again. Of course, now they cannot see their therapist because everything is in lockdown. We are, we have to social distance, we're staying home. And just the impact, the impact that that had on people. We're talking about people who are already anxious and depressed. And now you're telling them they can't, they can't go to their appointments, they can't see their friends, they can't, so this, of course, made everybody's life worse. So we had people experiencing sleep difficulties, stomach problems, if they had any type of other comorbid situations like diabetes or high blood pressure. Blood pressures were skyrocketing. Diabetes was out of control. So in addition to the physical, the mental situation affected, definitely affected the physical situation because we're one person, body, soul, we're one unit. So if this isn't working, nothing else is going to work. So pretty much, that is what we were seeing. And when we admitted patients, and we had patients who, you know, come in with COVID, so, you know, I had, I'm not going to call it an opportunity, but I also was involved in taking care of COVID patients. Okay? We had to, you know, develop rooms that, you know, could accommodate COVID patients, not only in ICU, but also in the mental area. So you would have patients who would refuse to stay in their rooms and become defiant. You know, you can't make me, I am not wearing a mask. So it was a struggle. And that is what healthcare workers throughout the healthcare system had to deal with, whether they were working in mental health or wherever you were working. Patients are so stressed out that, no, I am not wearing that mask and you can't make me and I will not stay in my room, pretty much.
So speaking of masks, I want to go to, where are we now? Last week, Dr. Collier shared with us, you know, statewide, mask mandates have been rolled back. And we're in the, I believe, the area where masks aren't required, but they can definitely be optional. And proprietors, businesses can choose to mandate masks. However, health institutions, doctors' offices, places like that do mandate those to wear masks. Chelsea, you mentioned the dashboard. On the dashboard, does it tell us where we are with the mask mandates and what to do?
So on our Broom County Dashboard, it does not contain that information about where we're at according to the CDC's COVID-19 community levels, is what they're called. But if you go to the CDC's website, if you just Google CDC COVID-19 community levels, then it'll bring you to the CDC's dashboard. And you can look at any location in the United States, any county. You select the state you want, then you select the county, and it'll pull up the community level for that county. So very happy news that Broom County has dropped to a low community level, which is the lowest of the three designations. So if you, what that means in practical terms is if you're feeling unwell, you should go get tested for COVID. You should get vaccinated for COVID if you're eligible. But you do not have to wear a mask indoors in public settings. And that COVID-19 community level, it's based on a few different factors. The CDC uses an algorithm to determine how to make these classifications of low, medium, or high. And it factors in seven-day caseload of how many new cases we saw in that community, the number of individuals who were hospitalized for COVID in the last seven days, and hospital capacity in the last seven days. So that would be more than just COVID patients. That would be looking holistically at the healthcare system in that community and what their bed capacity is.
Annie is with us. You can jump in anytime, Annie. Do we have any questions from our audience?
Yep, we have one question. Are preschools eligible for free COVID test kits?
I'm sorry?
Are preschools eligible for free COVID test kits?
Preschools.
Preschools.
Are preschools eligible for COVID test kits?
So if you are a representative from a preschool and you are interested in obtaining free test kits to give out to your families or your staff members, give us a call at the Broom County Health Department. You can reach our clinic division main line at 607-778-2839. Give us a call and, you know, explain what you're looking for, and we can coordinate directly from there if we have the capacity to arrange for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Annie, you mentioned early on about the vaccinations and high risk. And any of you can answer this question. So now vaccines are given to five-years-old or older. And so these vaccines that are given to five-years-old or older, they're school populations. Five-years-old, you're in school. And so do the children go to their, if they, if a family has, mother and father have a kid that's five-years-old, where can they go to get their vaccines?
Well, they can go to any one of our clinics. Again, go to the Broom County Health Department website. And we will have clinics listed by site, many of them being schools. Some of the pediatrician's offices are offering COVID vaccines. But, or I believe Davis College is, they are not, correct me on that.
Yeah, so I know that Davis College, I believe they've closed for testing. I don't think they're still offering vaccines, but I could be wrong. Annie might be able to speak to what availability is within the UHS system for pediatric COVID vaccines.
Right. Yep. So it is worth calling the pediatrician's office or the family practitioner's office to determine if they have a vaccine available. At this point, I think, because in the beginning, we were so concerned about vaccine waste, right? Like if we couldn't use the entirety of a vaccine vial, that we would want to make sure that we coordinate as many doses as possible. They are multi-dose vials, so we want to make the most of it. But if there's a request for vaccine, I think at this point, we're doing everything to accommodate those requests. I will mention too, that most retail pharmacies are still offering COVID vaccine appointments. So those can also be scheduled online. The beauty of scheduling online or even calling ahead is you can pick your brand and you can find a location and then you can arrange that are convenient.
That's also true for the boosters as well, Annie. If I've gotten my two doses at, let's say, CVS in Binghamton, so can I go back to that CVS and get my booster?
Yes. It's a great question. At the very beginning, the request was that you return to the same place where you got your first dose. So that was based on the vaccine availability. But at this point in time, that's not a requirement. So as long as you're scheduled for a location and they can accommodate you, you can get, which you can get whichever dose you want at whichever location is appropriate.
Margaret?
I think that is a preference because I have a friend whose son tried to go to a closer, I think, might have been Wright-Aide, and he got the original one at Walgreen on Main Street in Johnson City. And he was told that he had to, she had to take him to, back to Walgreen in Johnson, in Johnson City. That's Main Street, Johnson City. So I would suggest that you go back to wherever you get the first one. Because they do have it on file.
Okay.
You know, so I would say go back to the same place you got the first two.
And as far as vaccinations, there's a lot of information about vaccines. You can get your first two doses from Pfizer. Now, the information is that it doesn't matter what the booster is. Is that the same for children?
So the only vaccine that's currently authorized for use in children is Pfizer.
Pfizer, yeah.
So if you're between the ages of five and 17, the only vaccine available to you at this time is Pfizer.
And so as far as the Pfizer vaccine, are children required to get boosters as well?
Children are not required to get boosters, just like adults aren't required to get boosters. The booster is available for children age 12 through 17. And, but children age 5 to 11, there's still not a booster available for them. So adolescents can get boosted, but the younger ones were still waiting on the availability of a booster for them.
I also saw on the vaccine website that for, if you got Johnson and Johnson, then for a booster, preferably Pfizer or Moderna for a booster.
That's right.
Yeah.
Now, we're moving into over a year. It's, people have gotten their vaccinations, they've been, they have their boosters. Now, conversation is a second booster. What's the information now on having a second booster? Can anybody answer that?
I think most of us probably have about the same knowledge level as the general public. We haven't heard, you know, anything coming down the pipe from, you know, CDC or New York State saying, prepare yourself, it's coming. That's still in development, so we're waiting along with everyone else.
And the conversation that I've been seeing and, you know, looking at is, is this overkill? Shouldn't we be trying to vaccinate areas where, you know, vaccines are not so readily available rather than trying to give everyone else a fourth booster? Wouldn't that be the safer thing to do? You know, so it's a conversation that's ongoing right now.
You have input, Annie?
No, nothing additional. The only thing that I maybe would mention is anybody who's immunocompromised, if they received an mRNA vaccine, then their, their third dose would have been a booster dose. So back in, I think it was August, September timeframe, they were recommending that third dose for immunocompromised people to complete the vaccine series. So that fourth dose is really their booster. But that's for a very specialized population, which could also be accommodated in the high-risk clinic, but also in any, pretty much any generalized clinic as well, as long as you can attest that you meet those immunocompromised criteria.
We're in this time where we've come through the pandemic. We have been scared, scarred.
Terrified.
Yes. Our emotional well-being has suffered. What are some things that people can think about doing to help begin or continue to cope with this pandemic in, from a mental health standpoint?
The first thing I'm going to say is be gentle with yourself. Try your best not to be judgmental and of people who are still, you know, anti-vaxxed or you can't seem to convince them. You're still going to need to be very gentle with them because as far as I'm concerned, honey will catch more flies. So you'd have to continue to pour the honey on and see. Because I've been able to convince people, you know, just, just keep, keep at it. And I would say, try to focus on healthy ways of coping, healthy ways of coping. Take nice, deep breaths when you start feeling stressed. You know, if you listen to music, it's good. Read, if you're a reader, it can transport you to another place, take your mind off. You know, because we are still in a little bit of a situation. Try to eat healthy, stretch, meditate, exercise regularly. And you don't have to run a marathon. You don't have to become, look like Arnold Schwarzenegger, but, you know. Take walks, you don't have to walk for an hour. You can walk twice a day, 15 minutes in the morning, 15 minutes in the afternoon. If you're sitting watching TV, try not to sit for more than 45 minutes at any one time. Get up and march in place. If you have kids, you know, put some music on and dance with them, be silly. You make a picnic on your basement floor or in your kitchen. Spread a towel and pretend you're at the beach or something if you can't go outside, if it's too cold. Try to get sleep. Sleep is good. And a lot of people had sleeping issues before this. And if you're worried and you're stressed and your brain is going a mile a minute, then sleep is not going to come. Don't lay in your bed if you can't sleep. Get up and walk around, read, you know, stretch. Put away your phone, put your phone out of your room. Don't keep it next to your bedside. The light from the, that light that you get from phones will actually keep your brainwaves going and will keep you awake longer at night. And avoid excessive alcohol. You know, nothing's wrong with a little glass of wine, one or two. But please do not finish the whole bottle, leave some for tomorrow or the following day or whatever. And if you're a smoker, this would probably be a time to concentrate on cutting back or stopping. And if you have substance abuse issues, get help, stick with your therapist. You can go to the, either Broom County Health Department website or any CDC website, substance abuse issues website, and you can find all types of help. And locally, we have several places that can help you with substance abuse issues. So make use of whatever resources that we have in this community because we do have programs and we have people who can help you. Do not forget about, don't shame yourself. Do not call yourself names because that doesn't help. Okay? Be, again, be kind to yourself and be kind to the, to people around you also. Thank you.
We don't have any new questions, but some questions that were asked last week that I think would be helpful for those in the audience this week is, how long after catching COVID, or possibly catching COVID, should you test for it?
I'm not sure. Well, I guess, first of all, if you are, want to test because you've been exposed to someone who's infected, generally it's best to wait two to three days before you get tested. That way, the test will be most accurate. But if you're not, if you're not feeling well, you know, you don't know whether or not you were exposed. You're not feeling well, you have symptoms, congestion, a cough, something new of that nature. Don't, number one, assume it's just my allergies or a little cold or whatever. Get tested. And as I, as we said, you know, the testing is readily available. But there's a difference, if you've got symptoms and you test, that's generally appropriate. If you've been exposed, wait two to three days.
There are different types of COVID tests. If you've had COVID before or this is your first time, which test should you try to take?
Well, that's an excellent question. There's a lot of confusion about the testing. Basically, there are two kinds of tests. There is what is called a PCR test, which stands for polymerase chain reaction. And that test looks, is picking up the RNA of the virus, okay? The other kind of test is an antigen test. And that's what all of the home tests, for instance, are antigen tests, rapid antigen tests. Within 10 to 15 minutes, you have a result. That test will only turn, be positive if you are currently infected with the virus. Early on, when I was doing case investigation contact tracing, some of the people that I had previously talked to would call me and say, you told me after 14 days or 10 days or wherever we were at at that point, 14, I think, that I wasn't infected. I went out, the day I got out of quarantine, and I went out and got a test and I was positive again. And what, you know, what does that mean? Well, with the PCR test, I explain it to people that, we've all heard of DNA. If you've ever watched any kind of a crime show, they collect DNA. And of course, on the show, they have a result in 10 minutes, which is nonsense. But anyway, that's the story. So if I was in a restaurant and you wanted to know if I was actually there, you could, you know, test the glass I drank out of, you could pick up my DNA. But I've left that restaurant. However, I've left evidence that I was there. It's evidence, okay? Same with the coronavirus and the PCR tests. Those tests have to be sent out to labs, they are not rapid tests, which is picking up the RNA. The coronavirus doesn't have DNA, but it has RNA, something similar. And the fact of the matter is that that RNA from the coronavirus that has left your body, you're not carrying it, you're not going to break down and get sick, you're not contagious. That evidence can be picked up for at least three months if you get another PCR test. So that's important for people to know. And it created a lot of difficulties early on, particularly in long-term care facilities and so forth, where healthcare workers in those facilities had to have a negative test. They had to stay out there 14 days and have a negative test to come back. Well, because they were getting PCR tested, they would repeatedly test positive and weren't allowed to come back to work. We now know that, you know, they, they need to be tested with antigen tests. But those were all things that we learned throughout this. But yes, the testing and the differences in the testing are confusing for people.
Yes, we've all been through a big learning curve. And if you have to do, have a medical procedure done, the only test that is allowed is a PCR. The antigen, rapid testing is not acceptable.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and the knowledge that you have shared with us this evening. I think the challenge for us as we move forward is self-care, caring for ourselves in these challenging times. Prayerfully, the pandemic won't go back up. And even where we are now, we still need to take care of ourselves. And I heard, you know, be kind to yourself. So let's be kind to ourselves, exercise. I like what Margaret said, you don't have to work out to try to look like Arnold Schwarzenegger. But try to exercise, walking definitely clears the mind. And be mindful of, you know, how long you're sitting or watching TV and eating. Oh my goodness. You know, we can sit and watch, you know, TV and eat and not realize how much we've eaten. And so being kind to ourselves and taking care of ourselves involves thinking about mind, body, and soul. And so thank you for sharing that information with us. Again, we want to thank you for joining us. This wellness seminar has been brought to you from the Broom County Council of Churches. And we're glad that you had an opportunity to join us and get some information about what's going on, where we are, and how we can best take care of ourselves. God bless you and good night.